Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th Maplewood City Council meeting. I always like to start off with a little note about something that's happening in our city. And last week, I was able to attend the Yellow Ribbon Prayer Breakfast and Veterans Day Celebration. It was an amazing event. The room was filled with veterans who have served our country. There were five cities represented, and all of the mayors were there. From myself, I represented Maplewood, North St. Paul, Oakdale, Woodbury, and Stillwater. And it was a great opportunity to say thank you to a number of veterans. I hope all of you had a good Veterans Day yesterday. This is a little unusual for our council to be meeting on Tuesday night. We normally meet on the second and fourth Monday of the month, but because Veterans Day was a national holiday yesterday, we changed our council meeting until tonight. So with that, I hope you all had an opportunity to thank a veteran. I know I was texting with my youngest son, who is now a veteran, and I told him that he was my favorite veteran. So, yeah, and he said, "Ah, you're my mom." So, yeah, but anyway, I hope you all had an opportunity to thank someone for their service and for their sacrifice as well. So with that, let us do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Sint, would you please do our roll call?
Councilmember Neblitt?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Neblitt, seconded by Juneman. Any further discussion? Councilmember Juneman?
Two brief council presentations.
I'm sorry, what?
Two brief council presentations.
Okay.
Number one, a place for everyone, that's the Fair Housing Meeting on the 19th, and storm drains, doesn't that sound exciting?
Okay. Any other additions to our agenda? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to our minutes, the October 28th, 2019 City Council Workshop Minutes.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Neblitt, seconded by Juneman. Approval of the October 28th, 2019 City Council Minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the City Council Meeting Minutes for October 28th.
So moved.
Moved by Neblitt, seconded by Smith. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to appointments and presentations, the council calendar update. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The council calendar update is just informational, and it's intended just to give a council a snapshot of upcoming activities in the community and for the council. On November 16th, this Saturday, the City Council will be going on a development tour with staff and members of the Housing and Economic Development Commission. We'll be meeting here, it says 8:30, we're gonna leave, so you might want to filter in at 8:00, we're gonna have coffee and some pastries for you before we start off. We're gonna be visiting the cities of Richfield, St. Louis Park, and Robbinsdale, to look at some of their development projects, and to maybe get some ideas and hear about their challenges and how they did the work that they did in their communities, which are very similar to Maplewood in terms of redevelopment. November 25th, we're gonna have a joint planning session with the Housing and Economic Development Commission and the Maplewood Economic Development Authority, which is the City Council. And that will be a planning session from 4:00 to 7:00, so it'll be prior to our City Council meeting that evening. On December 9th, we will have our workshop, we're gonna talk to you about our new city assessment policy. There's some changes that we're making to the policy to be more in line with state statutes. And we'll also see a demonstration on the ClearGov software, which I think you will really like, because it will be very user-friendly to our residents in terms of being able to look at our budget, and see our capital improvement plan, and really navigate how that's all put together. So I think you'll really find that to be a good tool for being transparent with our residents about the work that we're doing here. We're also going to have an EDA meeting at 6:00 PM that evening. And at the council meeting, we will be having, asking for your approval of the 2020 budget and the CIP plan for 20 through 2025. That will also be our last meeting of the year, so it will probably be a longer meeting than we're gonna have tonight. So our next meeting in January, at the workshop on the 13th, which is actually be our first meeting, we're going to hear about our U.S. Census count update, the work that we're doing to make sure that all of our residents are counted. It's very important that we get a good number to do that, it's very valuable to our community. And then I thought we would add, I think Councilmember Neblitt brought this up, and it didn't make the list of things that we're working on, but the review of the process for how we do board appointments. I thought that would be good to position ourselves for the council appointments that we usually do that week, too. So just take a look at that all at one time. So then in 20, at the council meeting, we will look at all of the 2020 City Council appointments, that's what you all serve on throughout the year, to be the liaisons to our commissions and board and other miscellaneous groups, such as Ramsey County and others. So with that, I will just also note that the community, upcoming community calendar is on page two of your report. There's Coffee with the Cops, that's happened yesterday, I guess, so that's old news. We have the tour on Saturday. We have our Maplewood Business Engagement Networking Event, that's going to be December 4th at the Unison Restaurant in Maycomb Center. And the other thing, the Employee Holiday Breakfast is going to be on December 12th, and it's always nice to have the council members attend if you are able to do that. We, department heads cook up a very nice breakfast for our employees and would love to have you join us. On January 15th will be our State of the City Luncheon. And this year, we're gonna have Christine Osorio from District 222 Superintendent talk to us, she'll be our keynote speaker that day. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have, unless you have questions or other things you'd like us to look into for you.
Moving on to council presentations, we have two short ones, you said, Councilmember Juneman?
Yes, thank you. This is a reminder to the council and anyone in the public about the meeting a week from tonight, that's November 19th, a place for everyone, it's about fair housing in the, in this area. It's at Centennial Nine Methodist Church in Roseville, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And there'll be a panel of, there's a legislator, and then two people involved with fair housing. And I think we do a pretty good job in Maplewood, but there's always more to learn, so I hope some of you can be there. And then, the most exotic topic, storm drains. Actually, it's been in the news a bit lately, too, because of the odd type of fall slash winter, whatever it is we're having. You may have noticed that there's a lot of leaves gathering on many of our storm drains. So if you have one in front of your house, would you be so kind as to go out and pull the leaves out of it and dispose of them properly? You'll be glad when we get some kind of weirdo rainstorm on the 12th of December, or whatever we're gonna have, you know how it always is. And once they're iced in with all the leaves in them, they won't drain well in February or March when stuff is melting. So kind of adopt the drain in front of your house, please.
Thank you very much for that. And now, people who are at home can't see what I can see, but our room is quickly filling up. And I will tell everyone who's here, this is the exciting part of our council meeting. We have a promotion ceremony, Sergeant Michael Hemke is being promoted tonight, and the room is filled with law enforcement, and family, and friends, and this is really a fun time for the council. So with that, Chief Nadeau, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's too bad that we couldn't add more rows to the back of the room, because as you can see, law enforcement personnel are not accustomed to standing in the front of the room. It's a great night for the Maplewood Police Department. We continue to grow, we continue to develop new leaders, and late this summer, we did experience a loss with Paul Bartz, who retired. Paul Bartz was certainly a very special and unique individual that had an amazing ability to connect with our community, but with Paul's retirement, obviously, we had a promotional process. So to describe the process to become a sergeant as competitive is not really to do it justice. There is a comprehensive leadership assessment and practical exercises with a professional psychologist, it takes about six to eight hours. There's then an interview panel with leaders from four different police agencies, a peer assessment, an interview by the chief, and a number of other steps in that process. But at virtually every step in the process, Mike Hemke distinguished himself as one of our emerging leaders, and quite frankly, we're very, very lucky to have the leadership potential in our department. We had four or five people that really rose to the top, but again, Mike really distinguished himself, and it's my honor to be able to swear I'm in tonight. So I'll read a short bio on Mike. After that, we will do a swearing-in ceremony, and a badge pinning, and then Sergeant Hemke will offer a few words. So Mike Hemke grew up in New Prague, Minnesota, and growing up, he enjoyed competing in sports and being outdoors. He graduated from the University of Minnesota in 2010 with a bachelor's degree in sociology, law, and criminal deviance. After graduating, he chose to join the Minnesota Army National Guard, where he was commissioned as an infantry officer in 2011. Mike has served on one deployment to the Sinai Peninsula in Egypt. Mike has over nine years of military experience and is currently serving as an infantry company commander. Mike began his career with the Maplewood Police Department in December of 2013. He was a hard-working officer during his five years on patrol, and attributes the majority of his skillset he has developed from working with and learning from a talented group of dedicated officers. In 2015, Mike became a firearms and use-of-force instructor, and has taken a very active role in developing and administering use-of-force training for the entire department. In his role as a use-of-force instructor, Mike has taken the lead on integrating de-escalation into the use-of-force curriculum, becoming a certified de-escalation instructor in 2018. In 2018, Mike also became a field training officer, and said that being an FTO taught him the critical and impactful role of an FTO has in the development of the next generation of officers, and he's enjoyed that challenge in training up our new hires. Mike has taken an active role in helping to drive the direction of the department on a path towards effective leadership and community outreach. He has served as a union steward, a Labor Management Committee member, a member of the department's 2019 Strategic Planning Committee, and he will be taking the lead in facilitating the Strategic Planning Committee for 2020. Throughout his career, Mike has always made an effort to develop a positive relationship with the community, and is acknowledged on several occasions by members of the community for his professionalism. Mike said that one of the things about Maplewood in the community is that they, the support that they show for their law enforcement officers that serve in this community. Mike said he appreciates that the community is engaged and active in building a positive relationship with Maplewood police officers, and this is evident by their overwhelming participation in community outreach events hosted by the police department. Mike said he's eager to take on the new challenges of this role, and is looking forward to continuing to serve the community of Maplewood. Although managing a career in the military and law enforcement can have its challenges, Mike attributes most of the success to his wife Danielle and his family for their unwavering support, and obviously, that's a big impact for any of our public servants, but for Mike, who is pulling double duty both in the military and serving his community, that would be even more important. So at this time, we'll call up City Clerk Andrea Sint, and Mike, if you'd step up and be sworn in, please.
Stand here, raise your right hand. I, Mike Hemke, do solemnly swear
I, Mike Hemke, do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and of the state of Minnesota
and of the state of Minnesota
and faithfully discharge
faithfully discharge
the duties of police sergeant
the duties of police sergeant
in the city of Maplewood
in the city of Maplewood
in the county of Ramsey
in the county of Ramsey
and the state of Minnesota
and the state of Minnesota
to the best of my judgment and ability
to the best of my judgment and ability
so help me God. Congratulations.
All right. Like I said, it's a great day in Maplewood Public Safety and for our police department. Mike, is there someone that you would like to step up and pin your new sergeant's badge on?
My wife.
At this time, would like to give Mike the opportunity to address the council.
All right. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. First off, I want to thank the chief and the administration for placing their confidence in me and giving me this opportunity. I can assure you, the responsibility that comes with this position is not one that I take lightly. The position of sergeant is, in my opinion, one of the most critical leadership positions within the department. Sergeants are essentially the conduit between the administration and the patrol officers. Sergeants are expected to lead by example, enforce standards, supervise the patrol officers, and provide guidance and feedback to both leaders above them and the officers they are entrusted to lead. Although none of these tasks are simple, I can assure you, I'm up to the challenge. I'm committed to continue furthering the positive relationship between the community and the Maplewood Police Department. Through the strategic planning process, I believe our department is on a trajectory that puts us ahead of the curve in regards to the challenges of 21st century policing. I want to thank my wife and my family, they have provided consistent support throughout my career, and I am fortunate to have such a great support system. Lastly, to the officers, which, there's more here than I anticipated, I want to thank them for everything they do. I've spent my entire law enforcement career in Maplewood, and I am fortunate to have had the opportunity to learn from a talented group of dedicated, disciplined, and professional officers. Several of the officers here today were my field training officers when I first started, and they have consistently provided guidance that has shaped the officer I am today. I can honestly say that, more than anything, my fellow officers are the reason I have, and I will continue my career in law enforcement with the Maplewood Police Department. As a department and as a community, we are fortunate to have them. With that being said, I look forward to the challenges ahead, I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Another closer.
We will not be offended if you leave.
Is this something we said?
All right, council members, let us move on after that wonderful promotion ceremony. I always like those. It really is fun, isn't it? And Chief, I think it's, you made a very good choice, or the whole process was definitely a very robust process, but I think you made a really good choice. It's nice to see that we have leaders that are really rising to the top in our department, so thank you for that. The consent agenda, council members, Councilmember Neblitt?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can I pull out number four and number five?
Sure. Okay, you, are you highlighting those because you have questions about them?
Yes.
Okay. So number four, that is the resolution designating the polling place locations.
Yes.
City Clerk Sint, that is yours, I believe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So by state statute, we have to designate all of our polling locations every year, and because we have a presidential nomination primary, we have to have this done by December 4th, and then sent to Ramsey County. So that is why we're bringing the resolution a little bit earlier this year. You will notice that we do have some changes from the previous election, however, because these, these locations were enacted for the special election for the school. So they have all been used already. I'm, I guess I'm not sure if you have any specific question?
No. I just wanted them to be highlighted, because I saw my place was changed, and I just think that the more that we say the changes, it's just more information for folks to get out there, so they don't, they're not confused, that's all.
I think it's a good point, too, because there are changes at Precinct 4, Precinct 10, and Precinct 11.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And number five?
Number five, oh, I don't have any questions, I just have a comment.
Okay.
Okay. Do you realize that this is about the, our city's insurance? Because of the wellness program that the employees of Maplewood participate in, we are getting a reduction in insurance cost, a decrease. That is almost unheard of, let me just say that. Eighteen percent, which comes out to be approximately $335,963 for 2020, I mean, yeah, 2020. And the report says that Medica acknowledges that the city of Maplewood is having one of the most robust wellness programs with the highest level of participation they've seen. So kudos to the employees of Maplewood, and keep it up, and thank you.
Councilmember Neblitt, I will just respond to that in that, I know this, I was thoroughly impressed by that, an eighteen percent reduction, which is unheard of out there. This isn't the first time, I know this is your first year on the council, and so I don't know if staff knows what, it's been the last couple of years that we have actually had a zero percent increase. City Manager Coleman can maybe address that, and I think what it really shows is, when you invest in employees and their wellness, it's a cost, not only is it the right thing to do, but it's a cost-saving measure as well when it comes to our insurance. City Manager Coleman, do you remember basically what those increases have been? Well, there haven't been any increases.
Well, I can tell you that since 2011 to this year, over that time period, our increases amounted to about three percent.
Total.
Total. So that's pretty amazing. We started our wellness program in 2011, and, or 2010, somewhere in there, and it really took a while to take off. It was, you know, it just kind of rose steadily, and then like the last three years, now we have eighty percent of our employees participating in the program. And the key piece to that, and why I think it saved us money, is because it requires us to go to our preventative health checkups. So if you're sick, things are detected before you get really sick. And so I think that's the key, and I think the employees should be proud of themselves, because this is unheard of in other industries, and even other cities.
Right. It's amazing, I'm glad you highlighted it, because when I read that, that was really great news for us, so. Councilmember Juneman, you had something else?
He took the same two I was gonna highlight, so it's done now.
Okay. All right, then, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move consent agenda items G. 1 through 5.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblitt, approval of the consent agenda, G. 1 through 5. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business. We do have new business tonight. Let's see, the first item is the Amendment to Section G., or 6-130 of City Code regarding liquor licenses. City Manager Coleman, do you want to tee this up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. What we're doing tonight is a proposed amendment to our ordinance regarding suspension or revocation of liquor licenses. The amendment authorizes the attached, attachment of reasonable conditions to a license or permit, either by agreement with the licensee or as opposed by the city. Mr. Dave Anderson is here tonight from Kennedy and Graven, sitting in for Ron Beatty, and he's going to give you a little overview of why we feel it's significant for us to do this, and then after that, Ms. Sint can give you the more particulars of the staff report.
Mr. Anderson, welcome to the Maplewood City Council meeting tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for having me. So really, what this is, is our firm drafted a fairly straightforward amendment to the city's liquor ordinance that creates a procedural
Did you have my gun?
I did turn it on.
Green light.
Is the green light on? Yeah. Okay, yeah. It creates a procedural framework for imposing conditions on liquor licenses that are issued by the city. And the language itself does apply generally to all of the city's issued liquor licenses, and the authority for cities to do this is implicit in state statutes, specifically in Chapter 340A, which governs liquor regulations in the state. And really, the goal from our discussions with staff is to have this adopted and to go into effect prior to the renewal process for all of the 2020 liquor licenses, and it's my understanding that that's coming up here at the beginning of December, I believe. And again, this will provide the city with a formal mechanism through which to impose reasonable conditions on any liquor license that the city issues, and it provides that framework for the city to do that, and provide licensees with both the ability to work with the city on those types of conditions, or if they choose not to do that, for the city to impose them, but only after a hearing in which it would do that. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's sort of a rundown of the ordinance.
Thank you. City Clerk Sint?
So, thank you, Mayor and council. To just reiterate a little bit, we do have an ordinance amendment that we're looking for two motions on, specifically, Section 6130 from Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, and this is for either off-sale or on-sale liquor establishments. And so first, we'll be looking for a motion adopting the ordinance amendment, and second, a motion approving the resolution for publication by title and summary. And again, the proposed language authorizes the City Council, who is the licensing authority, to place reasonable conditions on a liquor license, either by agreement with the licensee or by imposition by the city. This statutory authority has given to licensing authorities, this amendment just bolsters that, and it will, it lists the type of possible conditions and restrictions, it specifies that they will have an opportunity for a hearing if they do not agree, that it identifies the reasonable conditions, that it is not, it can be imposed at any time, not just at issuance or renewal, and it also provides a framework for removal of the conditions. This amendment would take effect upon publication, and as a side, this will be the first one that we, that we publish in the Pioneer Press as our official paper. In reference to what Dave Anderson said, we do renew, December 31st is renewal, December 9th, we will be bringing the resolution for all of the licensees that you have to approve. Because you originally approved their license, you then also approved their renewal, it will be a consent item, it's a, it's just something that we have to do. And then, after that, we send all the renewals to the state that following, that week. So with that, we are looking for a motion, as seen on page 81, for adopting the ordinance amendment, and then a motion to approve the resolution by title and summary.
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Juneman?
Just a comment. This is something that, I'm really glad Ron brought it up. It doesn't happen very often, but sometimes you're gnashing your teeth, thinking, how many times do some people have to be told before they get it? So this will just enable the licensing and enforcement people to help us take care of it. No other reason but it, there have been times in the deep, dark past when, believe me, I wish we'd had a couple more teeth. Not often, but sometimes.
Do I have a motion? I move
to adopt the ordinance amendment to City Code Section 6130 regarding liquor licenses and adding provisions related to the imposition of conditions upon liquor licenses in accordance with state law.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman, the motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to City Code It is 7:31. We have effectively gone through all of our agenda items, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
I'm sure